You're watching Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
So I'll make a motion that we accept a consent agenda.
Second, motion made and seconded, anything to add?
None of the consent agendas that was on last week, we do have probably task warrant in there.
Last page of your packet. Oh, no, the warrant.
The warrant is in there also, but yeah, it's also the last page.
Well, the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thought that's what we signed last week, wasn't it?
This is a new, better one.
Tuned up. Public input.
Tuned up.
Police Chief Joe.
Hi, Dad. How you doing? We missed you the other morning.
Come on. You got your, maybe it's budgets over there, I don't know, is it?
No.
No?
Um, so.
It's just the item on the.
I didn't, I didn't number the pages for this spreadsheet page about ten or so in. Uh, so last week we had talked about, uh, looking at potential increases to the uncertified starting police officer ranges. So currently we have twenty-five an hour. The board had asked for a couple of different options, and if we want to try to modify them, something different, I can try to do that as we go. Uh, but I provided here twenty-eight dollars and then thirty dollars.
We have anything to look at, me and Bill?
Yeah, most of this.
Do you have your pockets?
We have that?
Yes.
Sorry, Mike.
Not numbered, but it's, uh, five pages and maybe.
You got it the right one here? Yeah, that's fine, right? It's on the back of the page, right?
Yep.
Can you find it?
Bill, did you find it?
There you go. So on the left side is current, middle is twenty-eight dollar starting for uncertified, and the right side is thirty dollar an hour starting uncertified. The increase that's shown is for payroll only, so you could add, and we should, at least it won't be in this budget, but you should understand that it'd be an increase of about thirty percent above that for primarily the Hampshire retirement system. So I just punched in for the twenty-eight dollar, the total cost is around ninety-one thousand five hundred in the total budget.
For, for the twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, right.
So what does that do to its operating budget?
If we increased it to seventy?
Well, if we, yeah.
Because the other one, the other, the other portion would be in the personal admin, um, budgets. Get that for, only, only a minute to give you that. But I think he was.
Pretty level funded, I think, right?
Pretty close to level.
So am I understanding this right? If we go here, we're gonna, this would be the new total.
Right here. So that's at thirty dollars. This presumably.
This would be if we went to twenty-five.
Yes, yep.
Over thirty, I see.
Twenty, thirty, and then there's another thirty-ish added to that for.
What is this number here? That's the increase?
Increase.
That it would bring us if we went just here, right?
No, it's the increase over whatever this total is.
I got you.
And then this is an increase for that.
Is that basically twenty thousand increase to forty, so be adding seventy, so be a total increase of ninety thousand.
I think that's not making sense. So what, seven percent or something there? Oh, yeah, it does.
Probably around there.
Yeah.
Maybe not.
That's where it's at.
Um, this is what we're paying now?
Yeah.
Okay, and this is what would go to if we did that?
Yep.
And this is what it would go to if we went that?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
And Michael, what did you just say, that the increase on the thirty would be ninety-one?
On the twenty-eight.
Correct.
Twenty-one.
Would go to about ninety-one five with the fringe benefits.
Got it.
And then would you add another thirty-five, or would you add thirty-five to the, to the end column roughly?
What would the thirty-five be for?
Benefits.
Primarily the retirement system. So they don't participate in social security, uh, but they do Medicare, so it would be Medicare and, uh, Hampshire retirement system, it would be, it would be for the thirty dollar an hour when the benefits would be about one hundred and sixty-six thousand. So about thirty-eight thousand of benefits.
You went that sheet you showed me last week, you have that, of where the other towns are at, so do you have it, can I look at that? No, that's in there, right? Yeah, you don't. Don't answer.
I think it's a seven point.
So we go from the bottom to.
To the top?
No.
Close.
Well, it, it, in the end column, but in the middle column, we'd be, we'd be in the.
Middle column, right.
So it's like seven and twelve percent. Close to the top. Between twenty-eight and thirty from the total budget.
Yes.
So the total budget increase would be about seven percent.
Yeah, because the one twenty-two would be like a ten percent. Ten or eleven percent.
So does that, how's that affect everything?
Well, like you said, the state retirement comes out of a different line item, so that would go up too. Just his overall budget would go up seven percent one way and.
Was your budget up or down this increase anyways this year?
No, it's one point seven percent.
It was very low, right? So his budget for the year would be up close to nine percent with what he needs and then, right?
And you still have some open spots, right, that we're budgeting for even with the year, so.
Well, that never consists of a fall.
Right.
Right, and full to you guys is twelve officers and, you know.
Chief Lieutenant, three sergeants, detective, SRO. Then six full-time officers, so what are they involved?
Thirteen?
Twelve.
Twelve, yeah.
When you said the seven percent, is that the highest?
No, that's the twenty-eight.
Only the middle one?
Yeah.
What would the next one up bring us to, how much percent?
About eleven or twelve percent. Yeah, twelve percent with the other.
I, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we make it, so we ain't coming back to this, you know? If we're gonna pull the trigger, just get it so we're, we know this is not gonna be the issue no more. And just, I know you gave us two from twenty-eight to thirty, but. My problem is I don't know what we can swing it, you know? I'd like to go to the top, to be honest with you.
What's it do to the overall increase?
Yeah, that's it.
It's hard, I don't, I don't know, it's hard to say. I'd have to, I need a little more time with that because we're still kind of going piecemeal.
So where are we now? We at about eight or nine percent?
I don't know, I think it's that. Well, without the.
Why do I want to say six?
That's where, I think we were at seven last year. So, yeah, I'd have to, I can enter it all. I haven't actually looked at ton at the overall this year, to be honest, because we've been mostly kind of taking it, um, one budget at a time, but most of them haven't been huge increases, a lot of them have been, so. Yeah, I can give you about the overall.
Oh, it's circling?
Yeah, we can make, give me three minutes, make small talk amongst yourselves.
We're gonna be dead now. This is where it'll be all higher than us, this is just, you know, here, I'm just saying, so.
With good benefits still.
Yeah, and, you know, Megan brought up the other day too, uh, the tenure packages are pretty good, if she read them, I know about it. What's your suggestion, Mike?
Let's, the answer to the other question first. It's a little more, but. Five point five, so it's pretty close.
With an increase or is five hundred five where we're at?
That's where we're at, without, without any, any of these.
So what's every hundred thousand due to it?
So that's for four hundred thousand, so every, every hundred thousand is a little more than a percent. That's just general fund, doesn't have the sewer.
Every hundred thousand is one percent?
About one, a little bit more, maybe one, one and a quarter.
So put us maybe at the seven like last year, if we took on the biggest.
Yeah.
But we haven't factored in any, any other wage increases either.
Okay, that's right.
So.
Because that's just gonna affect the whole board, right?
Well, this'll, this is for, this'll cover at least that department for the most part. But it'll be, you know, we have the other, the town hall recycling, we haven't factored in wage increases yet.
All I mean is I'm hoping that's gonna put us in that competitive area of the twenty-eight, but I'm not too positive, but at least we're better in the middle.
But twenty-eight's like about a fifteen percent increase, it's near, pretty sizable.
That's, no doubt it's pretty increased, but would be nice to really. Should have put us in the middle of those two.
You can pick something else, those are just, those are the two options I wrote down that you asked for, you might have asked for more, but.
He gave us the, the twenty-eight, the thirty, but about.
Twenty-eight fifty might get you up to a hundred thousand, follow the benefits for retirement. Might be a flat one and a half percent or so.
We're twenty-eight fifty, but I see twenty-eight fifty.
Twenty-eight, in mind, we stake still on a four percent. Out of these eleven, we'd still be at number eight. Without factoring in anything else. We're starting so low in comparison.
That's what I mean though, we don't wanna, I don't wanna see us bringing this back to the table in a year or two.
They're gonna all bump up to thirty and.
Yeah, and then they all go bump, I, I mean, we're gonna make a jump, and, and people are gonna take the hit, let's take it all at once. I know, if we can, I don't know, I mean, that's all I'm saying, if we, if it's possible, you guys know more than me when it comes to.
If we did twenty-nine, we'd be at number five out of, out of that eleven.
That's where my eyes is, that's where I would like to see it, take the middle of the road of both these, if, if it's possible, I'm gonna go along, because you guys know more than I do on how much this is gonna affect the budget.
It'll be about one thirty or something on the total budget, hundred and thirty thousand with retirement. Splitting the difference between ninety and hundred and sixty-six, right?
Yeah, that would put us in the middle, Bill?
It would put us at number five.
Instead of eight.
Instead of eight.
One, one, who the next guy's in what percentage?
Neither, twenty-nine dollars per hour.
You're right.
Need a motion?
We need to dig that.
Consensus this way.
Think it would help? I can hear a little bit else.
Well, this is working a little bit, this is.
So what happens if we do this and we don't see results?
Then, then, you know, we know, we just figure something else and maybe.
That's what we said, possible elimination, we, they can't bring that to us no more, you got another problem, right? They can't, they can't use that anymore.
We have.
It's over.
Where we had vacant positions, we could, we could afford it within the current budget, but it's just if we wanna do, if we wanna do additional. Yeah, let's think about that.
Say that again, I missed it.
He was asking about whether we'd go into effect.
January first or?
Could our police department run with five offices instead of the six, and we actually make, redo the whole thing with less offices? And make this a nicer number? Is that an option, meaning, you know, how we have six, what if we did a five? And that's our number, you know what I mean? And then we bring that number up, because then it would kind of maybe balance out things. Remember, we're running this shorthanded now, one guy.
Now they're working twelve-hour shifts.
I know, but they're down three guys.
I'm working fifty-three hours a week. I can't do this anymore, so. We gotta cough up against the whole being this one works, uh, but this needs to, you know, kind of.
So enough money to do it December first?
Try to get back to.
His budget?
Implementation?
It's in the budget, maybe we could, this year's budget, we could maybe roll it out December first, and that might help in sealing the deal on somebody or. Works for me, if it's there, otherwise January first.
So what we decide on the twenty-nine?
Yep.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion, we make the starting pay, move from twenty-five to twenty-nine, right?
Well, Michael said.
Yeah, but I'll make the motion, we move on it, and if we can do it December first, we'll do that, if we can't, we'll be January first.
Consensus. Consensus.
Oh, it is just.
Twenty-seven.
I heard somebody say it was their motion, so.
You wanna, you, you do a motion, we've beaten that into you.
Anything else, chief?
No, sir.
They just did it by consensus.
I wanna, I wanna do another.
They did it by consensus and then he made a motion because he hurt someone.
Then we're done.
It died for lack of a session.
You need anybody here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just.
Thanks, Charles. Thank you.
You're really Thanksgiving.
Same here.
Thank you. Anybody seen Heather Estrella? Anybody seen Heather?
I think he has a warrant for her.
Perfect timing. Perfect timing. You're up. We'll be all the better when you sit down.
The very next guest of the morning, see.
It's right here.
We're not even giving you a chance to be nervous, just go right ahead.
She's not nervous, who said anything about nervous?
So it's just my thought.
Where are we?
It's here? Is that kind of there?
Big one that says we are.
We are part-time.
Top of the state of the world.
A lot of these.
Yep.
Circle system.
Just go for it. Morning supplies, lip salt. Well, I guess, do you guys have a question about any of it?
Right. So hard to swallow a seventeen thousand dollar decrease, thirteen percent. The main reason for that is we budget expenses based on the number of elections in twenty twenty-four. As everyone knows, there's a four election year, town election, state primary, or presidential primary, town election, state primary and state federal. So next year we only have one, so this was our biggest budget for election stuff, and then next year is our smallest.
And we purchased a new body.
Yeah. Most of the other line items don't typically have huge swings, pretty.
So you're gonna actually want to, this year we'll drop it to four thousand, is that what we're meeting? To twenty-five?
So, the reason we're here is we have an annual fee that we pay for the voting machines that be split at high school. Because during town elections, they use one of our machines. So that seven eighty, seven fifty is the amount that they will house us for the annual agreement, and we'll split that amount with the each school. And then that also for the split of the food that we provided at the elections, and then also the ballots. And then getting our phone drive program and stuff like that for the election, so that's all included and done. Supply amount for the four thousand, do your check. The coating to be, all of those hashmires and that through our code throughout the ballots, that's the, the coating. Restoration of records is something we have been working on pretty diligently for the past three years, I would say. We're just restoring all of the records that have been involved, both up to like the seventeen hundreds. Um, so we're gonna try to do two more books this year.
Do, do you feel that you've allocated enough for that? Or you, it's substantially below what you spent in twenty-three and what you spent this year?
So.
You're doing a great job of doing that.
Yeah, mine was that year that I think there were some additional funds, so we were able to do two additional books.
It was. We budgeted for the voting machines in one year and then weren't able to end up buying them, so I think we, I think that was one year that we did additional books.
Right.
I had just money at the end of the year, I think the next year, so. We can kind of just continue to do it based on what we have left. So I wouldn't say, oh, she spent thirteen thousand, eleven thousand, we're gonna have to spend that much again, we could. But that was kind of taking advantage of the funds that were in there.
Well, I think we're fortunate that she's taken it under her wing to, to do it.
With your encouragement.
Well, our encouragement, but I think we wanna, you know.
You're encouraging, so it was here.
Yeah, can you just break it down, I think what happens, they're taking old records and they, somebody comes in and restores them and puts them all back together, how's that work?
Yeah, so next time you're, and you should come and.
I would love to see.
Yeah, take a look at it, so there's a lot of books in there that, um, town or starving, don't remember, it's the last, doesn't matter. Um, so there's books in there that go back dating, births, deaths, marriages, that are all handwritten. And the pages, if they're not preserved.
How old are these?
Seventeen hundreds.
Seventeen hundreds?
Yeah, so the only records really for Swansea are in the.
Wow, and then they take them and what do they do?
So we ship them to this company called Cofile, which is a local company, they were based out of Vermont, now they're still based in Vermont, but also in New York. And we ship them our books, and depending on what shape they're in, depends on how they treat the pages, um, whatever it'll be, just laminating them, but they spray all of the pages with an acid kind of coating, so they don't fade anymore.
Just the reverse? Because it's, it's acid that's breaking the paper down, so.
Right, yes, right.
So it, it stops that from them going any further? So we get that, what we sent them, but preserved, I get it, so they'll last them for us, I get it.
Some of them they rebind, some of them they, you know, encapsulate, so, um, someone started it losses years ago, it's pretty.
In a percentage type of thing, where do you think we're at, right, twenty percent of say, of, of restoring what we want? Have we, if you had to say, how much we have that we would love to do?
We'd love to do all of it.
And, and where do you think, what, how much of it we've done?
Well, we have completed all of the seventeen, eighteen hundreds for births, deaths and marriages. Maybe not all of the eighteen hundreds. We have moved on to taxes, because that's kind of the next series that are, the Biden's simple law, so one not good for us, and not good for the Bidens. So, we are going with a recommendation based on the company, so she came out and did an evaluation of what we had involved, and kind of gave her, gave us her opinion on how, you know, the order of how we should do that. I mediated from that a little bit, because I thought it would be great to get like the seventeen hundreds, final records, meaning the birth deaths and marriages, just done. So, next on the list, we're going to do record of taxes from eighteen eighty-four to eighteen eighty-nine, and then also record of taxes from eighteen ninety to eighteen ninety-seven. And then they also send us, um, a thumb drive and then a, um, a disc, so which can be kept in a separate location, but in all, that remains, nothing else to you both.
Do taxpayers in town have access to this stuff?
Absolutely, yeah.
So we actually sometimes have to hand this stuff to them and they use it, or they look.
They can come in and look at it, and they will be very little, they, they work well.
They do, and they go in a separate room to do this?
They can sit in back and look at it, they can go in the conference room.
And all this stuff is in the town hall?
Yeah.
It's in the safe.
Which I never saw.
That's cool.
I'm gonna see, I'm gonna have her show me, because this is interesting.
So I'm looking through all, you know, to find a box, um, that I'm gonna actually have Caroline look at, the, um, records, the, this, um, that, that were discharged from, this is service, harmlessly discharged, that are probably the only records that families have, that were there. So she's gonna see what she can do with this, because they were just in a box.
Incredible.
So I'd be good to hold too.
I didn't mean to get us off subject, that'd be interesting to know.
It's just an email, which I, I don't think we uploaded it, we decided not to, um, which is a rough price of how we came about the price of this, I'd imagine.
So we're gonna increase the budget from forty-two to seven thousand? Is that what we're doing, come last year, or am I reading that wrong?
You're reading it correct.
Reading what?
You're reading it.
I thought you said forty-two thousand, but yes.
Forty-two thousand, I am. Okay, and your question was, is that enough?
Yeah, Michael said there's room.
Good.
Yeah, I think we were gonna, so each book, you're gonna start with two, because that, you know, the average, you can see the comparison. But, you know, depending on how many pages are in each book, some books are full, and other books are only maybe a quarter of the way full. And then some books, depending on how about the pages are, and they'll be split into books. Um, so we might end up needing more space, but we can rent space from Keen, but we can. It's exciting.
And you sold the paper for these books back in the day?
Oh, I did.
Did you really?
No.
Seventeen hundreds, yeah.
Look, I didn't mean to.
I did, I did sell acid-free paper.
Oh, I'm not using paper. Do you want like dollars to poison? So that process is still, I think it didn't start, um, being kept officially in a, sound, even where until like nineteen sixteen, eighteen, nineteen seventies. And it's also slipped in the minutes too, depends on how deep you want to go in preserving records.
What are you getting?
Well, I'm not sure. Well, I'm not sure. The new equipment that's on here is for a new operating system for the motor vehicle boats and dock licensing software that we currently use. Now, which is G works. We'll be switching over to Avatar, which is currently with a tax sound. That is a rough number for what it would cost us to get the software installed.
Where do you see that coming?
New equipment.
I only see a hundred dollars.
Yeah, I don't think it's, so it'll be paid for from expendable trust fund.
Yeah, it looks like we're all about just.
It's in the capital improvement plan from expendable trust fund for IT and related.
Do we need to fix that?
No, it's fixed.
It is, it's just in a different, different plot.
Different plot.
Different account. Well, I mean, it's still, we can, we can still talk a little bit, but it's not an operating budget. It's a capital item.
So we're looking at switching systems to match what Kevin uses for taxes.
Do you see any benefit? It's like gonna be a better system or?
Yes and no.
Or resilient?
Still evaluating.
So the tax side and the town and the motor vehicle side do not cross over at any point. They don't integrate each other. The, the reason for looking into it and getting prices was to give it up for credit cards in house over the counter. And in order to do that, we were trying to make like a little easier for Teresa on the finance side. So she would only have to reconcile at the end of the night or the morning with one company for credit cards. Was to, you know, some of the thought process behind that.
It's a benefit.
So but in some research, we're finding that it's not that easy. It's not as easy as we think it is. We talked to some people that are, that are town clerks, they have slots, tax lifters. And there's still a lot of digging and like exporting of the motor vehicle and taxes that you need to pull apart and separate. So that it might not be as. User friendly as we think it is. We looked at it this year, but there's between learning the new voting machines and all the elections. It just didn't make sense to learn a new program as well. From a budget standpoint from the town clerk side, there is charges that Avatar will charge us monthly. On the basis that we do not get charged now. So to use the online, for instance, online credit cards that we use now, we don't get charged anything. It's part of our annual contract. So Avatar has an annual contract price as well as they charge us a hundred dollars a month. To use the online credit cards system. So that you know, it's probably a dollar a year that we don't pay now. The terminals to use for the system we have now, we pay upfront costs for the terminal. And then it's ours. There's no monthly charge. With Avatar, we pay and if we go wired or wireless. Anywhere from forty to fifty dollars a month for those terminals per unit, which I think we probably need one. So, you know, we're still playing around with that. But I also think, you know, maybe at some point when she has a few minutes, that Teresa can maybe spend some time in an office that. And see some of those end of night or end of day reports that she would see. Because they're not necessarily the reconciliation reports that we would do at the end of the night or that Kevin would do. It's the reports that she would get after those transactions have hit our bank accounts. That she would need to, I think that she should look at before we actually pull the trigger. Because if they're not going to be a turn for her, then I'd prefer not to make the switch.
So we're doing in-house credit cards now?
We're not, we'd like to.
So if we don't do Avatar, what do we do?
We, we, so we can do over the counter credit cards if we wanted to with the system we have now. I was just told that it would work better if we did. Using Avatar like Kevin, that the tax side uses that way we're all seeing her in the system.
So if you determine that switching to Avatar is not beneficial, we, we have the capability of doing something else.
So like right now, so Avatar uses invoice cloud as their third party for credit cards. G works, which is who we use now for our platform, uses E B two gov for their third party for credit cards. Which is who we have now. So Kevin uses invoice cloud now because people pay their taxes online. He just does, and he just doesn't, he doesn't take them in house either. And I don't know who pays their taxes honestly. Using a credit card against the fees.
Do we pay the fees or did we charge the customer? That's right, two and a half percent or two percent.
Well, for us, the motor vehicle side, it's three point nine five percent. If you use a credit or a credit card, you can use P H or. Electronic gets ninety five cents.
A flat ninety five cents for a tebbet? Nice.
Crazy. It's a lot of money, I know.
But it's a wash. We're not incurring the expense. We're offsetting the expense.
Let's not be as the customer.
You know what I mean? Otherwise, it's a cost to us if we didn't charge it. By us, I mean, it's not. We don't have to have a lobster license.
I was found this interest because I'm working on mine now. It's terrible. I'm gonna put it back onto the customer. I can't, sixty thousand dollars a year I'm spending. It's a lot of money. But it's crazy, the fees. I hate it. So you get a cash discount at my place now.
Gas only stations.
You come, you pay cash and you get three percent off your bill.
So people out of hybrid vehicles that don't use gas also pay on their registrations. Little dollars, something's a fault. That takes no gas in fifty.
How many bucks is pretty cheap?
So everything looks good to me here. You can hit a great truck. I think you got a great.
We have a bunch of questions.
Looks good.
Do you want to talk about your new hours that you're gonna be implementing in January?
You can talk about them.
I can talk.
I said, you can talk about them.
When, before, this is just a general question. When's the next Swansea uncovered come out?
Just did. Almost ready to go to the printer.
The, the reason I'm asking is with the change in hours, January first, do we have our hours posted in the Swansea uncovered?
I was hoping to wait until we, tonight, so we could get, we have, we have either in there new hours coming, check back. Or if we make a final decision, there's implementation tonight, we can put it in.
Okay, so.
I held the presses.
Good job, Michael.
So currently, as y'all know, we're nine thirty to six on Mondays, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty to five. Friday, seven thirty to four. Open forty two and a half hours to the public. We're looking, so then the town hall is going to.
Monday to Thursday, eight to five, Friday to noon.
Yes. We would like, we need, we'd like to start.
Just say it, what you're doing.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday?
Then Wednesday, Wednesday.
So what's the Monday and Tuesday?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, each portory.
I know you were staying open till seven.
Wednesday, nine to seven.
And Wednesday?
And there'll be two of you there.
Nine to seven. And then.
Friday, seven thirty.
She does Mondays, I'll agree to stay on most of them, but.
Why not? The only concern I have for me is you being there by, or whomever, being there by themselves.
So I appreciate that.
On what, the nine to seven night where it's stuck out and she's all by herself in there?
I, I know, I, I never allowed closers to be single. I was always a pair.
But we're, yeah, so really there's nights now that there's, one is all women there by ourselves. So either myself or Trudy, so honestly, like. Because of, you know, our, so we close their doors or lock our doors. And sometimes there's people in the lobby still, so we help those people. And then we still have to do cash out, which takes a little bit. I have a really bad habit of people calling and saying, hey, I'll be there in ten minutes, can you wait? And I'll say, no, the door will be locked. Eventually, so it also has really, you know, that habit of working later in the evenings as well. So they're usually, you're either leaving each other there by ourselves. My will is still there most nights, Monday nights in particular, but. If the back door is locked, right, and then our count, her door is locked. So I tell them someone tries crawling in that window, I can't, yeah, the back door.
I'm a little confused. The only night that would happen would be Wednesday, because we're open till five, she's closing at four thirty. Right, so it's only the Wednesday night, nine to seven, so we're concerned with.
When does the treasurer work typically?
She's usually done around five, I think. She comes in around.
Tuesday?
Yes, Wednesday.
A Wednesday.
It is Wednesday.
Didn't get your aim, sorry.
Too bad she couldn't work five to seven or something.
You know, there are new beats that.
It's not because you're a woman, it's the concept of somebody being there, regular hours by themselves.
They can't not offer it, you can there though, though. I mean, it's. I think that for our residents, we need to, we need to have a late night. It's not fair for all the other people that work at town halls also be there if they don't need to be. And Kevin, I mean, they're showing me only a couple of times a year that.
We could, I mean, part of the idea of when we did the, when we made the shift in having everyone have the late hours, the idea was, oh, you know, to that point, oh, maybe builders will come in and, you know. We're, home owners that are doing building projects, come in at five thirty, it just really didn't materialize. So who, I think realistically, whoever you have, or we try to have be there, I think they're just gonna be there. They'll, they'll be working, but I don't, I don't, it doesn't seem like in general people were utilizing.
No, no, just thinking from the standpoint of doing their work or whatever, catching up on what they want to do, just to be the other person in the building.
Yeah, depending on the person's situation, I don't want that to be.
And you set your own number. So it's, it's your call. I'm just expressing.
Do we have a button and alarm system?
Yes.
We do.
Oh, you have one then, behind the desk?
Then they do work.
Yeah, because I've had mine just go off to exceed to the realm of building. No, she has that, and why do you have that?
And I mean, and Truce was there a lot later in the evening, so not say until seven, but.
I won't be there most Wednesday nights, but yeah, if it was Mondays, I'd say.
Would you park in front?
But then I have around class, those people that are up in the middle.
No, I'm just thinking when you leave, there's, there's light.
More visibility, yeah, that's, it's a good compromise.
Hey, we get patrol to come by. Seven thirty, when are you leaving?
An escort.
You know, probably during, Kevin's not going to speak for him, so during the proceedings, sometimes the taxi, he would probably stay. And I asked him, your supervisors, and feel like our residents are great and I'm not, they're not. Worried about, they're really go, hey, there's work to do.
It's a bad neighborhood between Honeybee Hollow and the school.
Watch out.
The Grange. Grange, that's right.
Are those houses in effect right now? When do they go in effect?
First of the year. And then the seven thirty, you know, on Fridays we catch, because that's, again, a million old time that people need that money.
Mother, you would know best.
I just know when I, you know, I worked in Rockboro and I still, and I lived over here, it was hard, you know, I gotta work a little bit late or I hit traffic.
I hurried back from Concord yesterday to make the bank, Citizens Bank in downtown Key by five o'clock. I got there at twenty of five. They closed at four. Like three thirty or something. It, they close at four. I've never heard of a bank closing every day.
Even the drive-through?
Yeah.
Bring bankers hours to a whole new.
Well, the drive-through was closed at four.
Does the ATM work?
So I drove around and I went to the back door and then I saw. Nine to four.
Not a schedule made for state reps, that's for sure.
And I thought about pushing out a survey and asking people's opinions. And Michael's like, you wanna do that?
That's right. I think you, you would.
Send me new video for the map too. Michael just did a survey that worked out very well, the way he skewed the numbers and everything.
No, no, skip with the numbers, just having to work. Let's try this and let's see if there's demand for it. You've always been very accommodating. Like you said, you called it a bad habit, but it's good customer service when someone's on their way and trying to accommodate them. So it's appreciated.
And you're accomplishing by having the lead man, he's definitely had a fully better, so. Thank you.
Good job.
She's just telling, these are good for your hours, so there's no real.
She sets her hours.
There is consensus, but there doesn't really.
You wish her luck.
I think shake up a minute to those extra couple hours at night.
Shake needles. Thanks, Ellen.
I get a couple extra hooks at home from Nana, I can give her. Make us a pair of mittens.
That's right, bobo style. Now you got the, what, no, the, with the fingers, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Ellen. Rail Trails Advisory Committee Chair.
You can get a big budget too.
It's just a single one underneath.
Well, this is why I worked a little.
For work. This is a single sheet.
Well, that one. By the way, this was an easy one.
Start with the update of what's been going on.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so first, we handed out a bunch of brochures, we cut trail boxes, we put them on trails, actually we all camp around, bridges in, workshops, things, so kind of the marketing, you know, pretty common that the trails exist. Uh, on the Ashbrook Rail Trail, we mowed the whole thing, it's about seven and a half miles. Uh, we graded the section in Westport from South Old Brook Road crossing down to Route Ten. Uh, looks way better, we're gonna let it kind of settle over the winter, see if we need to do anything else to it. I think it's gonna be pretty good. Uh, the decking boards and running boards on the Ashbrook Swamp Bridge were replaced thanks to the Keen Snow Riders, so we do work with the snowmobile clubs pretty closely.
Came out nice.
Yeah, yeah.
It's better than the, the Bridgerton Keen is now the not nice one.
Yeah, right.
The Keen side too.
Yeah. Open by the Paul at your.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the two most northern washouts, remember we had washout back in July, the Sony Three, uh, their schedule will be fixed before the end of the year, again, through the Keen Snow Riders and some ARCA funding that came through the state. Uh, we, the trail committee, we're looking to get some detour signs, because the five remaining washouts, to my knowledge, have no schedule under any fix, is that true, Mike?
God.
Yes, so there's discussions going on with the town and DOT, uh, but there's no perfectly unscheduled fix, so we said, well, we should at least direct people on where to go.
Michael, are those the bigger ones you took me to one day? With that.
Those are, yeah, those are.
The big giant ones.
There's a one by Crebs Canyon, and then there's a one by.
Dump by the dump.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, but.
And then there's Craft.
From Creps.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, the one by the Dickinson Forest owned by a society for preservation of the natural forest.
Oh, I didn't know any of that.
Yeah, that's right, in that same.
You got it. Those are big damages.
Right. Um, as you know, we implied the mask grant for the road crossings and maybe saw and you found a problem, and I guess you guys decided, maybe two hundred and two at Swansea submitted and picked road crossings, so thank you for that.
It's kind of executive decision based on guessing what seemed like the, uh, preferred option.
Yes, I'll consider it, so thanks on that.
Is that a matter of truth?
Yeah, the same that we touched three.
Your sidewalks got kicked.
Very.
So now it's a limited time, so do I do, do you have buttons?
Exactly.
Beautiful.
So we got to find me for that.
When do you think that would happen?
I don't know, do you know when the money's available, Mike? I really don't check.
I think it would be at twenty twenty-five.
Project thinks of problems and production installed.
That's awesome.
Okay, on the Cheshire Rail Trail, we also mowed that through the town, it's about three and a half miles. Uh, we rented an excavator back in the spring, cleaned out all the ditches through the town, any standing dead trees, we knocked over so they don't have a plum trail, so they can off the trail. Um, so they manages the water well. Uh, the Swansea DPW graciously fixed the flooding issue at Mount Huggins, North Gate there. And sometime in the past, maybe you guys, the street water was routed off of Mount Huggins onto the rail trail, and it's been flooding the rail trails, you know. Joe's guys put in a couple culverts to, uh, help alleviate that problem.
That works pretty good.
And, uh, well, we don't know yet, because it hasn't been raining.
All right.
Come on.
But it should, uh, and they also re-leveled and graded the parking area so we can get more parking, like, more cars in their parking, and put down the three quarter hard pack, which is really nice, so it came out really good. Uh, through the help of Stefan and also Suzanne Bainsley from the county, but Stefan was the primary person behind it, we submitted an RTP grant to put the final, uh, trail surface, the hard pack material on the Cheshire Rail Trail through Swansea, and that got awarded back in September, so we'll be doing that come next year. Easy drugs. What's that?
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. So that followed through the news. Uh, yeah, so, and let me see, what else we have? Oh, the only thing I have, we're looking for another member, so if anybody looking for a member of our committee.
Why, you got me in all sorts of. He tows me around all the time.
Well, the committee is about to be done, so you'll have an opening in your schedule.
All right, so those are all the things that happened.
Just thinking of your best interest.
The committee's proposing to hold the budget for twenty-five, the same as twenty-four, make no changes.
Does that include the signs, the detour signs?
We should be able to get those issued.
Okay.
We're working on that, we're trying to get those issued. Um, what we're planning to do next year, um, we're looking to hold a organized bike event um, in May, and you know, ride one of the trails, probably the Ashbrook Trail. We can show off our detour some.
Today's a tough month. I, I've learned that from the airport, they've got a big race and open house going on.
Oh, okay.
And there's just so many competing.
Yeah, we pick that because it's bike month. But, you know, we'll see all of them. Okay, so we're planning to hold that, on the Ash, Ashbrook Trail, we're looking to get an excavator again to do ditch clearing there for probably about half the trail, we're, we're finding we need to do about every three years. Or they get clogged up and then all of a sudden you'll get all kinds of problems, so.
Do you have a date for the, the bike event?
Not, we don't have a date, we're just. This is the excavator that was, um, on Westport, didn't break. This is. So anyway, so run an excavator, clear ditches and fill all the camping mowers and all the other foundations in there. There's three galvanized culverts a little bit south of Riley Conservation, if, if you're familiar with the trail at all. Trail goes along and all of a sudden the parkway kind of goes down and shifts. Or in through there, there's three galvanized pipes where the bottom third is missing on all three of them. I think we need to look at that, knock before that whole paper, because the river's gonna be really close to it. So, uh, want to take a look at that and maybe apply for a grant, try to get those fixed before we lose that section of trail, we got another washout. So, we'll be looking at that. Uh, then do regular brush-off mowing, and we need to find a way to get the leaves removed, because there's been so many leaves and.
Joe just bought a blower for his sidewalk, wow.
Oh, dead blower attachment.
Pretty cool machine.
This, if you can help me out.
Who knows?
It'll blow.
He mentioned rail.
Five hundred yards into the woods.
Is it one of those cyclone?
Well.
Turbine?
Yeah, like they dry a NASCAR track.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's totally diverse. Lot of, lot of wind. I just don't know how much of your gravel's gonna leave, so they're careful.
What's that?
Well, you see the ones they use on golf courses, the turbine ones.
Seventy-four hundred.
They're pretty powerful, I borrowed one once from a golf, we tried it, it worked really good, just blew the leaves out of the ditches and everything.
I think you can adjust the air.
Right.
So we're not able to, to a certain material.
Uh, and then the Cheshire Rail Trail, like I said, we're gonna do this surface, uh, final surface material project, gonna get rid of the leaves and getting brush off of it, so that's kind of. Uh, we'll also, I don't know, already, already mentioned, we'll continue to handle that. Okay, so as far as budget, uh, no change, we want to stick with what we had. Do you want me to go into any more detail on that, or just?
Where do you rent the, the excavator from?
Uh, we typically, we've rented from Milton Rents, we've rented from him, the tractor. You know, United Rental Sunbelt, who's it all, let me contact, we actually used this past spring, we used two, two trucking and a ringer, which were pretty, except the fact that somebody smashed the windows there, something like that. Yeah, because you get them fixed.
How long does that get you with a rental, that from the money? What's it get, three days, a week, what?
We did a month last, this past spring.
You actually have it for one month, and you get all your stuff done in one month, and it's about four thousand dollars?
Uh, yeah, about that.
Interesting.
It's pretty reasonable.
Help helps a lot, I'm sorry. Volunteer help helps a lot.
No, I just meant to rent it itself.
Oh, yeah.
But there's no question about.
Yes.
Only if you want to try.
Jimmy, you have to be on the committee if you want to.
Cool, I agree, so do you get in it?
Committee.
You do?
Yeah, I run, yeah, I run it, Bruce runs it, you got a couple other people to help out.
Dalton has put in a tremendous.
You gotta get on the committee.
You can get on the.
Enough.
Then you can run the excavator.
You gotta go to the meetings if you want.
But I do want to do the, I wanted to do that whole rail trail, I want to see that, oh, I've never done it, so.
Adam was showing Jimmy his e, Adam was showing Jimmy his e-bike, Jimmy was very.
I was thinking about, would the e-bike go down that rail trail?
Absolutely, so I have.
It's a motorized vehicle, it's a motorized wheeled vehicle, I don't know.
No class two, though, not class three.
Well, I'll get Michael to get his e-bike and I'll get mine and we'll go for a run.
He'll show you the washout.
Joe, Joe's.
Oh, Joe's.
Imagine trying to use Joe's, you have a piece of dirt on it, he'd be yelling at me.
That would messes up.
I do have one question, so I understand Beverly's retired.
Uh-oh.
She's happy, but I'm not, so is somebody gonna be replacing her?
We hope so. Are you offering?
No.
Oh, that's.
I'm looking for the person, I'm not offering.
Do you have anybody in mind?
No.
Do you have a secretary on your committee?
No, she did all of you.
No, I, I meant, you got a chair, vice chair, you know.
I think she said you guys were more than.
We have.
We don't have that many members.
You did that, she does that, man?
Yeah.
Yeah, Beverly's.
No, we're lost, I might as well close down the whole town without Beverly, shut it down.
So I asked.
The guy was fine, we are trying.
It's gonna be needed.
Couldn't take us a couple of years, we broke it to Beverly the other night, it could take two or three years, but we'll get, we'll get her somebody. We're working hard on it, Bill.
The other place I might be looking for help, so I've been trying, I was coming up on three years to get signs put up. And having a hard time getting the.
They're still drafting the proposed regulations.
Right, so, so I, through their agreement, I sent them a pro- proposed recreational use signage guideline document, and that's in January, it'll be three years, we're still waiting for approval. So I'm trying to think of a way to get more pressure applied, maybe from the towns, to get a sign out, because um, um, when I'm working the trail, people come by, I chat, I go, where are you from? Uh, we're from the, oh, Maine, they go, oh, now, where does this trail go and how far, and where am I? And then we have a little clue where they are, because there's nothing that indicates.
Play with cell phone.
Do we know any state reps?
Oh, yeah, do we know any state reps?
No.
But, uh, that's a serious one, Jennifer as well, Barry was very helpful with the covered bridges, Donovan has already been helpful, so they're, they're responsive.
Yes, okay.
All right, send me maybe the most recent attempt to ask them where the standing and propose, like, insured, send it to our.
Who's your counterpart in King?
Uh, well, there's the IPAC Committee, their bike and pedestrian, Will Schoffman heads, chairs that, there's, that's where you're keen, we work with each other, Redfern a lot of that.
Can, oh, Will's in the, in the, in City Hall.
Yeah.
Can they work with you collaboratively on that?
Yeah, maybe typically King does what they want to do.
Well, then we'll do what we want to do.
You know.
So may set, maybe send them that document.
Well, one of the difference with the bill is Keen owns a section of the trail from Eastern Avenue to the Coles. So they can do it every month, they own the property. We don't, maybe the state owns it, state approval for the signs.
Because before you suggest just putting them up, we tried that.
We tried that and they got against.
Very, very unhappy.
That's how I learned what needed to be done.
Did they really, can I think, what you put up a sign?
So we did, I called it an experiment, we created ten signs and put it up and to get feedback from people, actually, people like. But one of them ended up in a picture that the Bureau of Trails saw, I'm saying, what's with the sign? You go, yeah, we're doing, you can't do that, it's not state approved, you gotta take them down. They go, oh, how do I get a state approved sign? Well, we need a recuse signage guideline document. They go, oh, create stat. Well, we, when are you gonna do that? Don't know, well, can I create it? Yeah, so I did, now I'm waiting.
Three years.
I'm sorry, you were not waiting this long.
I'm sorry.
Do what I can. I'd send that same document to Keen though. Maybe if they get it from a couple different directions.
Well, one thing I was thinking of is that this is Henry Underwood, actually, had this, like, he said, well, let's get a project for like the whole southern part of the Cheshire Rail Trail or something, right? And the project is put up signage, they get every town will agree that they want signage, right? And now he gets four or five towns that are all saying, hey, we want these signs.
Troy has dick, he's.
You know, maybe that.
We get leverage.
That'll be enough leverage. All right, so that one. So any questions?
Thank you.
Comments, concerns?
You guys are doing a great job.
You're not even asking us for more money, can't believe it.
You try really hard.
That's very, it's very nice of you, but we will see if we can donate to blow it to you.
Yeah, I'll talk to Joe.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can.
That might help.
I think he plans to be able to use it on the trail too. I think, I think that was one of the uses he thought of.
It's brand new, you can break it in.
Very often I want to break it in. All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Kathy. Consideration of septic ordinance.
What is that?
Back of the packet. To my oversight, you did not get all these wonderful materials that she provided to me, so you can listen to her and then, I don't think she's looking for any decisions.
Where is it?
They don't know my again.
They.
Page ten.
They do, and they have the information, but.
This one or this one? This one, page ten? Well, there's no pages on it, but.
Can help, please.
Right, my son.
Right, so I can do a little better. Swansea Lake Watershed Grant from VMO was analyzing valid last year, F B and Lara Mills submitted their finding, it was in September, I think, this year. Um, so that the watershed is okay, but there are below ten action, I said they want the town and residents to consider. One of the findings is that phosphorus levels are rising, which is not, it's an health related. And one of the major contributors to rising phosphorus level is they're accepting systems. So, uh, Swansea Lake Protective Association has been doing, um, been trying to educate the residents of the watershed, sending flyers, information about how to be a good steward of the lake. Um, and in an effort to incentivize residents to, um, inspect their septics, I reached out to a couple of local septic service providers and said, hey, if I get like sixty people who live on Swansea Lake to call you, not more, but you know, of course, the last few months to evaluate and service their septic, would you give us like a five percent discount? And frankly, they don't do business because they're all as busy as they want to be, but apparently there are several septic systems in the watershed that are currently there. And the people are married, but whoever are home made, and so I learned that some municipalities in the state of New Jersey actually have, uh, regulations that require people to live in watershed in those municipalities to inspect and service their subjects every three years. So there's a RSA one forty-seven ten and one forty-seven one that gives voice of selection, the authority to adopt, uh, regulations that would compel people who live in watershed to do this every three years.
So this wouldn't be a warrant article, it would just something that would come directly from the board?
Yeah, so this is a warrant, so that's more of the things I, and I can email it to you directly, but so I have the ordinances, and then I have, um, septic rules for the town or Sunday as well as, um, Google articles. And building septic systems mean healthier lakes and, uh, and if you're looking at fuels to protect the water supply, smoke powder, use of, which are already, I'm just considering keeping this. So I'm asking you all to consider doing this, because it also aligns with the master plan to protect the natural resources of Swansea, uh, Swarthmore Lake and Littleton.
Okay, so when we get that inspection back, to, is there an enforcement that they have to fix it in a period of time? Or is that just brings awareness to us that they're feeling?
Yes, so they would be notified, the homeowners, they saw us do this, so there would have to be some oversight, so everyone would have to do this. Um, and there's, if you, let's say you're in act this January first.
Yep.
Um, people, people who are getting, if a septic system's older than, I don't think, you know. Um, people, people who are getting, if a septic system is older than, I don't know, like a, you know, ten years old, twenty years old, they have to, um, inspect it in the future. So I'm just, our chair said that, but assuming word in the, uh, regulation however you want. Uh, but then there will be follow up. If you have to have inspected, well, it for us has to be me to do with that certain, or perhaps there's a fault in that.
It would be helpful to follow that along and, and understand what Sonabe, for example, or Enfield, if they have it. What, what they utilize as an enforcement.
Yes, I give you all that. I have all that. I can email.
We could revoke a C O. Potentially.
I know, uh, in this past summer, legislation was passed at the state level for, um, any home sold in watershed. So within a hundred and twenty-five feet of water. So if you live on a lake, your house is within a hundred and fifty feet. From one to one fifty feet. But, um, in order to, if the sales go through the septic, it has to pass inspection. If it doesn't, there's a hundred days or something that the buyer has to , um, prevent septic or sale can't go through. That's the state level. That's only when a home is sold. It does address any home that is not being sold. So that's one of this regulation. Things that.
The responsibility for that falls on, which does it fall on the town? Too, because i- is it a, is it a retroactive? In other words, we, we see that a property transferred. How, how do we confirm that there was actually an inspection that was done?
For a sale?
For a sale, yeah.
Um, that's a good question. I have to look at the regulation.
I'd just be curious about that. I, I saw that site assessments were removed, which really shocked me, and I'm very disappointed that they were removed. Then that doesn't, that to me flies in conflict with what you're talking about. Uh, in terms of the requirement to have a septic system inspected, which it should be. But to remove site assessment, I'd, I'd love to know what the logic was there.
Billy, I thought when you sold the house, you, in the bank required an inspection. It would be why.
They don't require.
They don't? Really?
They require a septic on a property that's vacant.
See, the only problem I have with this little thing is I got a seventy-five septic systems in my pot that I maintain. And whenever I call somebody to come on and evaluate the septic system, ninety-eight percent of the time, Jimmy, you gotta put a new one in. Your tank is crap to this. And I, and I feel like they come there and they want to get a job out of it. Do you know what I'm saying? And, and I've maintained a lot of septic systems in my time. I know everything about it, but and I don't understand how they, you know, I, I understand the leach field. They'll pump the tank out, and if you get a lot of flow backwards, there was a lot sitting on leach field. I understand all that. You can, you know, understand the leach field part of it, and that's where she, where we become the problem. The leach field getting out of the field and leaching into the, the water, right?
None of the systems are immune. They don't have septic tank. They're holding hall.
My God. They hold and haul? Are you kidding me? Yeah, see, a lot of this is outdated, right?
I said, it allows us as a, as a holding tanker.
Yeah, fifty.
Holding tank's not a big deal.
We have a health officer.
Yes, we do.
That's what Sonabe has. They have health officers that are designated to move out to answer this kind of regulation.
Our health officer is Pam Fortner, and I sent her this information and she said, well, she's, she's familiar with it from a lot of the trainings that she's done. She's heard about it. She makes it all.
Yeah.
All good.
I mean, I understand Kathy with this should, has to be done, but we're gonna put a lot of pressure on the people on the lake. I'm gonna wa- you're gonna watch fifty percent. We're gonna need new systems because they probably all outdated, old, right?
I don't, you know, I don't hold them over, so.
I would imagine. How many do you think are around there, that, that lake? Septic systems? If you had to.
From Swansea, there are about sixty, sixty or so houses.
Yeah, and they're all individual septic system each one. It's a lot, Billy.
There, there are inspectors, some just inspect.
Okay, that's true. And that's why.
Right, that's what we want. Someone who doesn't have any.
They have no interest in trying to sell something.
I don't think they do anyway, but there's no thought of it because they don't do it.
Yeah. So.
Do you know these inspectors? Do you know anybody? Maybe I can get me those numbers.
Sure.
Because I always relied on septic companies.
And they.
You see, a septic inspector would have no interest in it, no, no dog in the fight. He would just go there and tell you the truth and walk away.
I, I do think that the companies do as well. It's just the the appearance.
So does this seem like a reasonable thing for you guys to consider? You're not asking for a definitive, which is.
I'd be interested to know how much an inspection costs.
Oh, gosh. A long time. Less than five hundred.
And you're not getting every three years? Is that a little tax to put on somebody?
Well, but the flip side is what, what county's getting at is the deterioration of, of the lakes. Doing water quality, but.
Well, then, I mean, this is something people should be doing anyway, because they live on the lake and they should want to take care of the lake. So in fact, that there are some not doing it for whatever reason, um, this kind of sample compel, which is unfortunate, but it would compel them to do your right thing.
I agree. It's probably living next to water. You got the water, right? You got a beef spide, have your coffee, look out the lake.
Right, so that benefit comes with the responsibility.
They are going. And I, see, I don't feel badly about that as much as you do. When you, you pick to live on the lake, it comes with responsibilities to live, have water on your back door. And one of them is to protect that lake. And that reason that Kathy's saying is true, I mean.
I'm also doing research. I'll grant, um, possibilities for people if they have difficulty before something like this. So I'll make that information available. The help is to be painful, but I think it's the most wanted.
Well, I mean, we've already increased the setback. We've gone from the state seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five feet, so.
For new systems?
No, for anything.
Many will build, that's the only thing, but for state is still surplus. So my house is a hundred and twenty-six feet.
There you go. But we are changing that, by the way, retroactively. It's a hundred and twenty-seven now.
You live in the lake?
Yes.
Is there consensus around, around the lake with people that are part of the group to pursue this?
The Swansea Lake Protective Association, yes. So I have gone to your, your asking every resident. So, yeah, Swansea Lake Protective Association.
It'd be interesting.
Education came from. What will do? So I've, I've given people all kinds of information as I get it. Some hearing from people like, oh, you know, that's there, you know. They're gonna bring and ask me something.
It'd be interesting to know what, what the pushback is going to be. Because when, when the public hearing is held, it'd be nice to know how many people are gonna go upstairs and, and what, what it's gonna be about. So that's why I was asking whether there's general understanding, uh, conception of what, of what y'all are proposing. Makes a lot of sense. I agree with Jim. It's, and, and running sore around Wilson Pond certainly didn't hurt. There was, it was a benefit. So.
We've had sort of Swansea Lake.
Wilson Pond. Did I say Swansea?
I don't think so. And Wilson Pond, yeah. So my understanding all this time was, oh, it's the fertilizer, it's the salt from the roads and the.
They don't use sand on Swansea.
Yeah, and I was talking to Joe about it. He said, Jimmy, that's not, that is, we don't do that. And, and everybody's making this, but it's the septic system.
We actually had a, um, kind of informational session this summer on, um, the right kind of fertilizer for people who do have lots. Most of the yards have natural, but those, so an informational thing is if you want to use fertilizer, you're supposed to. Working hard to educate people.
Well, I know that affects it because I put a well in the middle of the park and we had septic systems around just, um, gravel water to, for a fountain for the children in the park. And I had the water tested just for chocolate, and that was high because of the septic system. You know, and it's, that's what, it's really happens, you know, and if you don't step on this with sixty septic systems around the body of water, it's gonna affect it. And years to come, it's gonna make big differences. You know, it's a constant feat.
Right.
Right?
As a breach of a beaver dam didn't help. We had that big rain last year.
You watched.
And what happened? So Swansea, they were in hole basically, so Swansea Lake is here. We have watershed, it was up, we're seeing a lot.
And it broke open?
And, yeah, the dam breached, uh, this past the other twenty, twenty-three.
Happens, happens every few years.
That Sunday, that Sunday, that rained a whole lunch, within a few hours and the lake well rose like three feet that afternoon, but the beaver dam breached, so it was a lot of jump from, so trickle down into the lake. So that didn't help.
You don't have anything showing from years past.
See, it's probably climbing, do you?
That shows that it's climbing.
Beaver trap.
What about the phosphor?
It was just one.
We're doing testing, yes. So I told them.
Three years or something, wasn't it?
Sorry.
Something like three years ago.
So you can do that. There's a lot of. Do you shovel water down and?
People, this is the upper.
I know.
This is the upper pond. This isn't Swansea Lake.
It's not on town property.
I haven't heard, uh.
Well, it's not. We're trying to figure out who owns that. I was looking at tax and I have to figure out who owns that, see what we.
So this, when we, when we go with the traveling, does that take care of the?
Beaver problem.
It, it looks smaller. And for, I will take pictures. It looks smaller, so I'm not sure connectivity there is there.
Be better tomorrow.
Beaver pond?
Yeah.
Because.
Getting rain.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Kathy, but you actually went out and did the stay while?
I did. I, I, yeah.
And you did different levels? Because I, I know.
Yes.
That's good for you.
See, I've, um, my mind, my mind ran off as I.
Because that's hard to do.
The work.
Good for you. That's pretty.
Like you're all the late, so.
Good for you.
Do you have any questions for me?
To Sly's point, if we, if we use the Sonabe ordinance as an example, it does have, uh, uh, provision for exceptions. So if someone does have a reason that they feel like they can't apply, there's process, uh, so.
Yeah, like I said, there's a, there's a couple of municipalities I've reached out to. They provide information. I speed you that as an example. I will email to you everything that I have. Ask me any questions. Would you want to?
We've probably told them that there's no information or systems on the lake.
Quite possible.
Especially if they didn't do an inspection.
I don't know my doctor. Nothing in the records.
Point of ours is so, we need regulations.
Yep.
And then this hand down from family.
Sure.
Just a few of those.
I'm sure there's a couple. And there'd probably dry wells and other, other types of, of systems. I think it's great what you're doing. Thank you.
Make sure I thank you around that lake. That's something that fears. Yeah, I know. And you know, the thing about it is Kathy, you're probably gonna have, we're gonna see the problem. We'll be dead. All of us will be gone, but you know, you're thinking of the future for the next generation too, and that. I don't know how fast it's traveling. Do you, do you, you don't know that yet?
All the after, and so I don't know what the difference was before, because we did a large sample after the storm in twenty twenty-three. And it was very unhealthy. But so we didn't know, is it like this or is it just because of all the debris that washed down? And so it's kind of all bad for it. It's not great right now, so I don't know. Was it silent to go back? Like three years, four years, was it ever great?
Yeah, that's what I was interested in. Let's see. When are you gonna go back out and take another test?
June, we start.
You're gonna do it June?
June, July, I guess.
So you got last June, Stan. When did you do it now?
Unfortunately, I jumped into this in, um, to have our photo because that first one was doing, um, was not able to do it. You know, it was rare. So we don't have any data for twenty twenty-three.
That would have been nice.
Twenty twenty-three is a weird year because the two drains come July.
Terrible.
Yeah.
Wow, interesting stuff, Kathy.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Hey, Kevin.
Doing business? Just before you get to Dwyane of Winchester or Chesterfield, have anything? I don't know what we're working on.
For the, for the septic thing, that's what I'm.
In your, in your rule, is that something you could bring up and just talk about? See if there's any? Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I'm trying to remember. One of the, Sonabe doesn't go, maybe Newberry. I think Newberry was considering it. I don't know if they got approved. I thought it was, I thought they said it was a warrant article for them. Um, but they had mentioned it, and that's the same lake. It's, it's also around Lake Sonabe. Um, but yeah, I can see if anyone wants to.
So how does that work? Now, we let her go and we're gonna run back to the table. Oh, what's happening there?
Yeah, I'm gonna do a little bit more research on the process.
Once we get through budget.
Yeah.
I said, well, I just didn't know what the process was. I didn't know if that's something she was expecting us to make a decision on tonight. We never do that. You're trying not to.
Not enough there.
Not enough there to make that.
We'll need a proposed ordinance and then, probably like Bill mentioned, public hearing, certain amount of notice. I don't know if we, each, each ordinance can be a little bit different.
That won't be brought up in the public hearing, something like that?
It has to be, right, public hearing.
We might, we might have to notice the property's affected. I don't know for sure, so we'll need to kind of check the process.
I'd like to.
If a month or so goes by and you haven't heard anything, you're gonna remind me. You can ask me how it's going.
Yeah, because I want this whole world to buy.
No, I know it does, you know, and.
It's just this more budget now.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what the process is that's.
And then we're gonna have petition warrant articles and warrant.
I'm learning.
Yes, you are.
Probably, I think you're right. Roger.
December meeting schedule?
Yeah.
Um, so regular meetings are scheduled for the fourth, eleventh, and the eighteenth. And then, uh, so the next two Wednesdays are, uh, Christmas and New Year's Eve. Or Chris, yeah, Christmas and New Year's Day. Uh, so we probably will need to meet one day somewhere in the last two week span. Uh, either if we have end of year stuff or sometimes we have a last minute budget item to get, um, approved. So I suggested the two least, uh, least defensive options, as either Thursday, twelve twenty-six, which might not be great if people are traveling, uh, or Monday, twelve thirty. I don't know if you guys all have a preference or.
For me, it would either be the thirtieth or the second, which you didn't recommend, but.
Well, just it might, we might have something that needs to be acted on before the end of the year, so.
Okay, yeah. I could definitely do the thirtieth. I don't know about the twenty-sixth, but I could definitely do the third.
We're talking about December?
December.
Monday, the thirtieth?
Monday, the thirtieth.
So right.
Wednesday, not first. Oh, no, go ahead and back through the list because Jim didn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
December fourth?
Yeah.
Which is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
The C I P committee will be presenting their fact report, which they finalized today, which they barely got a forum for.
Can't imagine.
Missing member.
Missed one meeting.
Most important one. Bruce got there. It was only about a half hour late, so we, we got there eventually, but poor Beverly. Um, then December eleventh, regular meeting. It's just a Wednesday. And then the eighteenth, also just a normal Wednesday. Then the next two Wednesdays are holidays, Christmas and New Years. So it sounds like we're leaning towards the Monday, December thirty.
I'm just saying, I know I can do the thirtieth. I don't know about the twenty-sixth.
What's the thirty for a Monday?
Monday. The best is as close.
Wednesday. I could do that.
New Year's Day.
I could definitely do that.
Town clerk will be open.
That's right, so. Nine seven.
Until seven. So we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to interfere.
Wouldn't want to interfere with that. I would say inaugural, nine, the seven. Anyway, I, I just can't commit to the twenty-sixth now, Sly, but I, I can as we get closer.
So right now, the next meeting is December fourth.
Yes.
Correct. Go once on the thirtieth. Sly, you're not traveling for New Year's, are you? Jimmy, you don't have a New Year's special guest on Monday.
My park meeting may be there, but I can change my park meeting if I had to. If I had to, I would change my, I have a meeting on December second. It's every two weeks. So what would that probably, would it land on the thirtieth?
If you meet on, do you usually meet on the Monday?
I'm gonna meet on the second. So the second, every two Mondays I meet.
Let the vice chair handle that one.
I will do that.
Well, no, you would meet on the thirtieth if it's every two Mondays, cause you'd go from the second to the sixteenth.
Right.
And then you'd go, you'd have three meetings in a month.
You do.
You do, okay, then it would be the thirtieth, yeah.
Well, actually, I can probably.
We could wait at a different time.
I can do that yet.
Cause it's probably gonna be more of an emergency.
Well, it's usually brief. Usually we don't have appointments, like sometimes if there's.
Oh, yeah. I'll work around it. I'll make this a priority. And making it for everybody, I'll make it a priority. I won't go to Conca that day. Thank you.
Do you wanna plan on a different time? I think we'll have the hall to ourselves, so whatever time you wanna do is fine. Do you care, Jimmy?
I don't care what time, whatever's convenient for you, that doesn't matter.
Keep it full system.
Whenever. Keep it the same.
We'll do five thirty and then if we, if we want to adjust it, you know.
Probably be over twenty minutes. Sorry.
Next item under new business. So we have, so Christian Hill Road is our only road of its kind in that it has, we got town maintained, normal road and eventually it becomes what's called a road to summer cottages. There's no summer cottages, but uh, that's the classification, which means we grade it and maintain it in the summer, but we don't plow it. So the last house on the plowed portion is one sixty-six Christian Hill Road. And the zoning board just approved a detached accessory dwelling unit for on the property passed where it's currently planted. So you'll see in your package, probably somewhere in the middle to the lake part. Yes.
But it was a hundred and fifty eyes.
They got, it's, that's what was probably this picture here.
So.
So it shows the existing.
Oh, it is a ways up, isn't it?
It's a ways, yep.
They're gonna plow it?
They, I know.
What's that?
They're gonna plow it.
So that would be the, yeah, that's what, so I talked, discussed it with, uh, council, Cordell. Um, initially I was thinking, is this like a, so Jimmy, for your background, we've had a few situations where people wanna build on class six non-maintained roads, which our ordinance does not allow, but you said that's not the situation. It is a town maintained class five road. But if they want to, but the town doesn't have to maintain it any further than we currently do. So he recommended if it was something, uh, the board was interested in approving, um, entering into an agreement with the property owner for them to plow that portion, to provide their own, eat this.
But I understand that there's another option for this lady to stay on her own property and connect her way out of her, her dwelling onto the driveway of her mother's home to come out onto the paved road. But it seemed like it's a little hassle to, um, cause the only thing I'm scared about is we open a can of worms here where, you know, little ways up the road, the next guy says he wants to do it and the next guy and, and then are we liable for anything if she doesn't do it? Is the town liable for anything? Like say she just said she was gonna do it, she doesn't do it, we have a storm and something else happens on that piece of road. Would we be liable for anything?
I don't think so, because, so that's the concern with the class six road is that you usually wanna waiver of liability. Case, case the ambulance can't get there and someone gets wrecked. Where this is already a maintained road, um, it's more about the agreement to provide access versus the liability aspect. But if we, if there was something we wanted to try to address in the agreement, we could try to do that. I didn't wanna have them spend time doing that if it wasn't something. Um, I didn't want to have them spend time doing, drafting up the agreement if it wasn't something the board was interested in.
Have we ever done something like this before, you guys?
It's our only road of it. That's, it's, it's our only road of that type. So I don't think.
So the name of that really road is a, a road to cottages?
That's the legal classification.
Is it the legal class?
To summer cottages, right?
Wow. And that's the only road we have that's considered that.
Right.
I got you.
There are in other towns, roads like that, but then, but they associate, they, the homes create an association.
That's the more common is that, yeah, it's, there's summer cottages, literally. This one is a weird one and that there are no summer cottages really. There's the one little house in the middle that Pilgrim Pines now owns. Um, so I guess that could be.
The one that's where the, the, uh,
Yes.
three-way thing.
The, the switchback thing?
Yeah.
There's a driveway off it, yes.
So do they maintain that in the winter?
No.
Okay. I, I don't. I have a lot of misgivings on this. I would love to have been at, uh, just a fly on the wall to understand how the, the Z B A approved this.
The law plans and conditions.
I, I, I know that.
There is a recording of that Z B A.
Do you want, do you wanna give us the summary here?
I do not. You're responsible for that, but there is a recording of it on our website.
Good answer.
So the reason I bring it up is because one of them is, one of the conditions is, is this board making that determination.
And if you decide against it, then that, then they approve.
No, I know that, but, but it's, it just seems to me that philosophically, it's a land use board. The land use board should be the board making that determination. Yeah, and, and so, and I agree with Jim. This may not be quote unquote a class six road, but our ordinance says town maintained road. So this road arguably is not a town maintained road, cause we don't maintain it during the winter. I, I think it opens a significant can of worms, uh, from the standpoint that how often has, have variances been requested? And denied, because it's an extension of a, of a class six road. And when I, when I read Adam's, uh, instructions, one of the, one of the items that he wrote was, and this is off of his, um, memo to, to the board. He says, only one A D U, D A D U is allowed without additional requirements for lot size, frontage, space limitations, or other controls beyond what would be required for a single family dwelling. So if this were a single family dwelling, it would not be permitted. And, and that's why I question why it was, was approved even with conditions. So I, I don't, I don't think we should venture into it. I think we just deny it. And, and as Jim mentioned, having driven up there, uh, I personally didn't measure it, but it seems like a lot more than a hundred and fifty feet from the end of pavement to the end of where this property line is. And just looking at the map, you've got over three hundred feet that, or well, actually the whole thing is over four hundred feet, but you, you've got initially a hundred and fifty-five feet. And I don't believe that the pavement extends that full one fifty-five. And then you've got two hundred and thirteen and then a hundred, whatever, say eighty. So it, it's at least two hundred some odd feet that, that they're asking for as opposed to the hundred and fifty.
Yeah, you can comment. Then I know I'm not supposed to. But like, if I had been on the board, I would ask, I would have asked, if they're putting the house, the A D U, close into the original.
Right, and that's what Jim was bringing up.
And all the others supposedly, why are they isolating, or unless she's a witch, um, you know, why are they isolating their way down here when they could be here? And then you don't want to be talking about it shortens this to make.
And that's my argument. She has options, you know, that would prevent this problem. And I don't think she's exercising these options and it's something to do with her and her mother and, but this is a personal thing. Don't put it on us if you put that pressure on us, you know what I mean?
You don't know that, because it could be, uh, I don't know if it falls in land. I don't know whether there is.
Oh.
Rainbow rises real high.
Okay.
But now they, now they're talking about, you don't know what she's dealing with. And it never came up, but it, they showed it fast about that to the applicant last night, Monday night, I'm sorry. And they didn't.
They didn't.
It could be other reasons why she, she can't put it there. I don't know.
If I, personally, my vote would be not to, not to do it. Not to grant it. And if we do grant it, then I, I think there needs to be consideration for bonding. Uh, from the standpoint that if, if, if this board decides to, to, to grant it, then they, the, the applicant would be responsible for the maintenance of the road uh, to our standards. In other words, Joe, it, it wouldn't be just the driveway going through you, because you've got to, they would be required to do the entire section of rolls width to width. Uh, I would think it'd be incumbent on us to require a bond, five hundred or a million, five hundred thousand or a million, uh, to cover any damages that are done that we're gonna have to repair. Uh, I think there's also the, the, the thought that, and I don't know that Joe would agree with this, but if, if, if we were to grant it, we could do it with the condition that they bring the road up for that section to the standard for which it, it currently is and paving. Uh, so.
We have a testament to that, because there was a family who wanted, who had property on Talbot Hill Road and wanted access.
That's right.
It was denied because we knew the board told the applicant that they would have to maintain the road to town standards up to that where they wanted to do the house. And it was going to be prohibitively expensive.
True.
They ended up going away.
I don't think we denied. I think that was direction and then she went away, but I don't, I don't think.
Oh, you don't.
Yeah, we, no, no, we didn't deny it, but we put that in place and then they withdrew.
Yeah.
But it's the same concept, yeah.
Do we have that big, been, for both the expensive to maintain it to stand, to town standards?
And it would have gotten washed away last year.
Yeah.
They're probably lucky that they had them that they.
One point I'm making is you have all this precedent, so you can fall out of it.
That's a good point.
It is a little bit of a different situation where it's already class five, but it's similar to.
I, 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 I'm totally, I'm, I agree with Bill. I think, uh, my decision was, I think it's just too dangerous, I think, for us to open that up to letting her maintain that road. There's too many ifs, there's too many, you know, I think this could bite us down the road. And, and, and you know, who's to say she's gonna maintain that to our quality of standards too? I mean, this could be one sweep up there. It's a mess. It's building. I don't know. I just don't think it's smart. And I didn't realize the zoning board, they, they would approve it. So the zoning board brought it to, was getting left to, was if this is approved, they were approved, right?
Well, there's some, there's some other conditions that are.
What are the other conditions? Does it have to do with anything with the road?
No. The, the whole house, you, the minutes that you want to be. But usually the mayor has said that why they were voting yes.
I know.
Right.
Septic well location. Detailed flow plan. Either the crystal dwelling or A D U must be owner occupied, building permit. Common ownership not be set by a transfer.
Yeah, I think they have other options, not, not seeing what the lay of the land is up there. They definitely could move it closer to the main house and be more of a dadu than.
Yeah.
The separate dwelling.
But there was somebody up there that told her, her contractors had said it could be done, where they could, she could connect to her mother's driveway very easily. There was someone there that told her clearly that it can be done very easily to connect to her mother's driveway and come out onto the pavement. That's what I understood.
What, on a motion or consensus? Either way, I think consensus is fine. If she wants to bring back more information, is board open to?
I thought she was gonna be here.
I think she lives fairly far away. I think she is on Zoom. Um, Garrett said she was on Zoom. Um, I think just with the late night Monday and then coming up again, I just don't think it's.
She's on Zoom right now that she can hear us? Oh, does she have anything she wants to say to us?
Anyway, to answer your question, I think we've, we've always, uh, welcomed people that, that wanted to, to make a presentation to the board.
Well, no, like with the zoning board, it's, you know, you can only get that one bite of the apple. This was just different. I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, I think the other issue, another issue was they, they approved this with a two-bedroom septic system. And we have a three-bedroom minimal. So that would have to have been adjusted as well.
Well, D D U is only a part of the two bedrooms.
I know, but we, we don't have a, as far as I know, we don't have anything in the ordinance that carves out a separate septic requirement. But our, our requirement is that, that septic systems must be three bedrooms or, or, or better.
Because it's a separate system, you said.
Because it's a separate system, just like Garrett. So this came up because I had somebody, uh, remember we've, we've talked about Belmont Drive off of West Swansea, uh, or West Shore Road, and I had somebody that wanted to build as an infill. And they, they were gonna have to ask for, they couldn't get a three-bedroom system on the property. So they were gonna have to ask for a, a variance. There were multiple variances, but that was gonna be one of them. And they would have been restricted to a two-bedroom home, but they still would have had to get a variance to do it. And so if we don't, to my knowledge, we don't distinguish uh, accessory dwelling units as a carve out in, in the septic ordinance. It might be there, I just don't know that it is. Garrett had the question, so.
And I'm a little confused on that. So they built a home with two bedrooms.
She's on?
They had the little septic system.
She's on?
With three bedrooms.
Yes.
Is that down the line if they some extension, another bedroom?
Just to require.
So you have to have a lot, you know, tanks.
Wait, wait.
Get to hundred gallons in the field that the.
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty. And then you'd have to have the field, the right dimension. And that, you don't see that happen here.
Well, there's a drawing in the application.
We have a commented question from the applicant.
It's in here. I think you know, right here. Two.
What do you have, Garrett?
Uh.
Move that chair out of the way. I'm going in front.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for considering this, um, you know, like I understand there's already a little child, my mom, who lived up in Swansea, um, twelve years ago, and, um, I will be with my kids and she'll be there. She really, they're working on it. Her, like the diary situation, um, that is complex with, with her stuff, um. We, you know, do events to help her, to care for her. They're only getting talent this Friday, the right then. Um, so I, I really want her to be here. Actually, with the town, she really loves Swansea. I saw a, after normal, it's hard for her. Um, and she, she really wants us to die. So I, and then, you know, give her things really narrow space and we're gonna help, continue to help. Um, so I feel like, wow. Even she did, I was just like, I'm a little scared she'll be gone. Um, I, I can very well option, of course, they really say too, they're looking, just looking a little deeper at the option. Um, I just wanna know that I'm absolutely, I'm sorry for anything that's necessary. I guess to help my mom, make sure she can meet, remember connection to the travel, say.
Is there a reason that the proposed dadu is so far away from the main house?
He doesn't have to be, I think, like, there was a confusion there. Cause I told she's thinking of the, that's the issue, I should draw it out. To, you know, give it books that's possible, but still has, um, obviously rum and cream and soup. Uh, she does have a fenced in yard where her dogs go for fun and hide the property. So I think they were trying to make sure that she worked out. But she, she absolutely was short in the, the width of her fence. So her, her family regarding, uh, and, and I can believe that it wasn't too great, actually. Where the road is, um, that's actually more pretty close, uh, a lot closer than, uh, this proposal. I had a lot of possibility here. Uh, with, you know, the, there's that, right? Um, to, to search, so, okay, but. So I, yeah, probably possible, I think.
Well, so just for us to be clear, we're, we're not denying that you have the opportunity for an ADU. Attached or otherwise, our, our, our role is specifically with regard to access to the road. So as, as Sly mentioned, if you have other options. By all means, explore them, because we're, we're not in a position of deny, denying it, the zoning board approved it, it's really location. That's the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I understand with the driveway, so, so where they have. Her father, I think, there's marbles behind her and her driveway is already other than being fine. And I've already had to help her retain her driveway, um, over the years. Um, I did all her cares, but here's the surprise that they need that. Doing a lot of work on her health, um, if you keep going on. Uh, but I heard how to get to it, I think you. Um, it definitely could be an option, but I just find it would be. A lot easier in many different ways that I, I said for drive, I told you. When they're like to, to relax, you know, there's posters, our houses on, um, off the pavement. And that's our care, um, I just wanna make sure that it makes that form, the architecture that provide. It seems like it would be, uh, a lot to, to extend. Um, where's, where's, because I already have trouble, you're right. Some of her, her trees are behind her hospital, they're both extending, we're not having them. I just see, wasn't sure if he should be here, um, so you both care. A little bit, also, you know, how the dental science will take a little bit of time, I'll say, then all around. Thank you, you know, with the last ability, I wanna make sure he all, obviously those thing. And yeah, this is just like to help her share her, if they have to.
I'm fine. I, I think that. Uh, this, the chair's suggestion that you explore other options would, would be to your best benefit. I don't know, like, is that fair?
Yep. I think we're, uh. Not willing to. Have the road used. Without having a bond posted. And having it maybe significantly upgraded, so. I think the most cost effective approach might be for you to move the dadu closer to the main house.
Where's the pay for it, Bill? Where do you think the paper is to? And what do you think her driver leads into right in here? And she's saying she has dogs out here with the fence that go around. Have you looked at any other options of trying to get closer or is this your first? Plan that you submitted? Did you, did you, did you talk to anybody up there that maybe could get you closer to the pay pot of the road?
Yeah.
Who did you talk to? Yeah.
That's option here, besides looking at the driveway and her, it's a good driveway, I hope this is that. We were just, just to confirm. It was a start, but yes, this person, sorry. Of course, it'd be very possible. With the town, it's probably, we're beating around. The TC has, we wrote this on the. They're not more of that, especially on route, we think, to, to, right. I may also be, you know, do that, we are, it's a.
Well, if you're able to use the existing driveway, th- this whole discussion is immaterial.
Yes, um, we want the major driveway here. Yeah, that's why I thought so before I submitted it before, um, because it just seemed like it was gonna be. Some issues with that. Over the Monty side of the park, uh, that'll keep that side. Tell the next robber smoking.
Appreciate, appreciate the input.
All right, thank you.
What's next?
Uh, town hall open hours, just if there was any further discussion, kind of had it as a preliminary decision, but I think. Between Heather's different hours, I talked to the team about it last Friday and. I think everyone's on board to give it a shot and see if it, see if it works. Uh, so I just wanted to confirm that was the direction we wanted to go in effective January first, we can put it in the Swansea uncovered and. Roll it out.
Yeah, my main concern really was having an evening hour for, for vehicles.
Yeah.
Taxes can be mailed in and all that, so can vehicles, but it seems a lot of people like to actually be there.
I think we got that one down, right?
Yeah, it will with our new hours.
I think it actually worked out good, right? And you did have a great point there, you know, for the other night, and that solved it right there, with our hours, you know, it's good. You gave people the option, when they get out of work, they can pick Wednesday night to come and.
Which is. Start coming to our meetings.
That's right, yeah.
We would do that, is anybody still on to the meeting? Even if they aren't there, um, so we've got some more budgets to go through, the excited ones that got it. You don't have to make it so obvious that there's snacks involved in this meeting now. Only whatever you provide, we have any gluten free chips or anything?
Fortunately, most of them are. I found out that Doritos wasn't.
All your hard work.
Oh, no, this was years ago, this was five or six. It hit, laid me right up.
Where are we, Michael?
So this big staple one, so the first page is Heather's elections and registrations with.
Can we still be some part now then?
Oh, no, you don't. You don't take the staple out. You're supposed to learn from Bill's mistakes, not repeat them.
Are we, what are we doing then, flipping it?
Well, you've done it now. So we're on forty one, forty one thirty, executive and.
How many uncovers are we eliminating?
No uncovers eliminating, staying with, staying with two uncovers. Why do they watch it?
It's, um, EX, next change.
EX? Oh, so, oh.
So you didn't, you didn't, they didn't all get, get stapled together in the same order?
They didn't.
No, no, because I.
Look, he messed his up, don't let, don't follow his lead.
We got this one going.
Yeah, we gotta go under.
We got it under control, just keep going on, running. Where are we at? Yeah, this is for the town, right?
Yep, so this is the over glorified executive department, so in terms of full.
So, how will we handle it? We brought it, the town forester in. Seven or eight years ago, what's, what's actually happening?
So his most recent project has been the Mount Crescent forestry job.
Yeah.
So he helps with some of the, uh, timber tax, we have one that Christine feels that we wanna have him look at or. If it, just for different reasons, if we wanna get him involved, or someone appeals it, he can get involved. Um, so that's not paid out of this line, this would be if we wanted to do more forestry work on existing properties. So it's kind of just a placeholder, but, um. Yeah, so then we use meadows and, uh, timber.
Right. And so we're doing four Swansea uncovers, two? We're not doing a digital version?
We've done that for years.
Oh, so I just, I did pull mine out of the mailbox, but it seemed like more than two, wow.
It's enough.
I suspect it is. And so this next one going out next week, that'll have the new hours as of January second.
Yep.
What do we have miscellaneous expenses, so the selectmen, who's that?
So, it's kind of what it says, but, um, some of the big things when we buy the clothing, so we buy the branded shirts, that usually gets posted there. Um, the holiday lunch, which is coming up.
Right, we have a holiday lunch, yeah, didn't you get the same date?
We do not.
We do too, seventeenth.
This is new because of me, I'm with the new guys, so you're celebrating me?
That's right, how did you know? And you're providing all the catering.
We would have invited you if we were celebrating. You didn't get the email?
I did not get the email.
I didn't send it over.
Actually, it's the seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Huh? What is the seventeenth?
What day is that, Bill? What day is that, Paul?
Is it seventeenth? It's a Thursday.
Day that I'm very busy at the restaurant like Saturday night.
Oh, nineteenth.
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 I think Tuesday is.
That's a Thursday, isn't it?
It's a Thursday.
Yeah.
You're not busy Thursdays.
It's right here.
It's lunch.
Right here.
Lunch, yeah.
Just us three?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the entourage, all the town employees.
All the town employees?
Are invited, yeah.
This is kind of weird. Never do.
Yeah, you know.
Beans is spilled, Michael. What were you gonna tell me, on the eighteenth?
January.
Okay, so we got lunch and then we got shirts and the selectman expenses, what about our Christmas bonus, is that in there?
No, that doesn't exist.
And that comes out of pocket.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, speaking of which, we need your contribution.
Recost program.
So do you know what that is?
No.
So in Swansea Lake, at the boat launch, um, they have someone who's called the lake host, which is a, either volunteer or poorly paid professional. That, um, greets people and basically checks for mill foil to make sure.
Oh, I met, I met those people, yeah.
So we help pay for it, and the conservation commission also.
That's fifteen hundred bucks a year and that's it.
Yeah.
Salaries all staying the same, it looks like, right?
Not too many places to cut there.
Not much. I'm sorry?
Why is Megan hourly?
So then, that position doesn't meet the definition third salary, based on. Either the main tests are supervision, so shows directly supervise any employees. Um, there's a couple of pressure, professional exemptions, but that's more for like doctors and scientists, so. Usually the, the main way municipal employees qualifies, if they have, if they have employees, they're supervised and that feature does well.
So the printing went up because we bought a new printer?
No, so the town, town report printing?
Yeah.
Is that what you mean? Uh, so no, that's, uh, so that's for the town, annual town report, the little book, and then the voter guy that gets mailed out. Uh, we spent more in twenty, so it gets printed by silver, you know, for folks, it's not something we directly print. Uh, but we were over in twenty four because, um, the employee that normally handles that was out, and so we had to hire. Former employee to help with putting together the report.
Okay, so is it gonna go back to around four thousand?
Yeah, I bumped it up a little bit.
Three hundred bucks, two hundred bucks?
Yes, something, so that was a anomaly here.
Is, is.
Uncovered magazine.
Does take him?
I think so. Doesn't, yeah, it didn't show here yet, well, good question, maybe it could have gotten posted through, uh, elections, but I'll, I'll try.
There's very much increase in the selectman salary, is there?
Cost of living. Still think about it on an hourly basis.
We don't get the performance bonus either.
Your valuations are every three years when you get reelected or.
You have any incentives? No, we don't have nothing like that.
Of course you do.
Well, you give me one, I'll, I'll, I'll get it.
Half years, you get to hold your sign again.
If you work, if you survive two years, you get that little thing next to your name, that you're, survive another year.
And I can pass that to the next guy, right?
No.
I'm gonna pass it to Bill.
It's a good experience.
I'll be along with you and we'll enjoy it. All right, you got your hand to run the forestry, the timber?
Yes. So the next one down here at the bottom, AS is assessing, so that's the. The full time employees assessing technology coordinator, and then the contracted assessor, Maresoff assessing.
Which one's Dave?
Maresoff assessing. And, uh, three, one, two, contractor assessor.
So that looks pretty goo- good, right?
Mm-hmm. So that's the, where we have when the forester helps with, uh, timber tax issues, that's where that gets posted.
Why, why is the assessment support going up so much? And then, um. Has Dave just not pulled on this year?
So I think it was largely backloaded this year. The revalid date separately, but I think a lot of this work was done around the revalid line for the general assessing. I think there was a, there was a, there was a pretty big check in November, I believe, so. I don't know if it was posted October, November, but I think we had that, well, a bit under twenty. Closer to the.
So is this, uh, line one ten, is, is that the only, only line for that position?
For staffing?
For staff?
Yes.
So that, that position, this is.
Correct, it's not the one though.
Okay. And is this a step situation with the?
The increase?
Yeah.
It's based on the changes to the job we made when we added that technology coordinator piece, so she's the point person now on. Technology coordinating with IT, helping fix kind of minor issues when they come up on the website, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. It, it seems like that's where our main increase is, is in salary.
Right.
So you're not foreseeing a lot of legals next year, even though we're into a lot of legals this year and it's gonna bleed into next year?
I think, yeah, this year will have been a anomaly, just a perfect storm will set over that. Situation. The IT system maintenance, so, uh, Twin Bridge Services are a managed service provider. They give us a sheet that shows the total cost for the town and they break it out between different departments. Um, so this is the line item for town hall, but in a lot of the other departments, as we've kind of gone through, you know, police department, they have a line item there, the next. It might even be big, they're very close, if not bigger, to the town hall cost and then.
Police is probably the highest.
Yeah, because they have their own servers and they have, fill out separate stuff. Um, you know, fire, DPW, recycling, everyone has a piece that goes in their budget, but this is the town hall portion. To the call toll, it's around forty five thousand. And then IT equipment is, uh, we usually buy like four or five computers a year, um, based on our rotating schedule. Website miscellaneous support, pretty self explanatory.
Alan's staying on for another year?
Yes.
What departments are on the Hampshire retirement system?
Police and fire.
That's it.
That's it. Everyone else is the ICMA, which is not called that anymore, so it's worth changing it or not, but um, what we put in, employee puts in five percent, the town puts in seven percent is the normal distribution. They can put in more, but at least five percent. And those are just placeholders now, so when we enter, especially some of this other information that we've talked about earlier, we'll update those, so that's the, I wouldn't pay too much attention, but if I want to have a placeholder in there, so when you ask before, what's a total increase, I can at least give you somewhat of a ballpark.
Are we going three to five, three out of the, page three or five?
So at the bottom of page two is the start of planning and community development department, and then there are the top of page three as well. So that's the planner, assistant planner and co enforcement officer, full time positions. And the part time positions are illustrious, minute ticker. I don't think that should be a decrease in positions because.
What's showing a decrease?
The part time salaries.
When, when did Adam come on?
February, I know he started in April, April first, or right around like half of May.
So, so is, is his salary also shown somewhere else? Oh, I got it. I'm just like, I'm, I didn't look at the activity section. Okay. Yeah, sorry, I, I just didn't look at the twenty four activity. We have more people going to conferences?
Yes. Yeah, between Adam and Stefan, we're really trying to make sure one of them is at, like, and we had the housing workshop, there was an economic development, and so it's really a benefit to have for two people that we can send them to more without, you know, having an empty, an empty office, so.
It doesn't overwhelm them.
Exactly. They can divide it out. Adam went to the planners conference. So they're gathering, dividing it out also because. Software and support in that department is for the co enforcement, avatar building software, building inspection, so which feeds into the assessing. A lot of these advertisements and postage are covered by fees. So if an application, the applicant pays the cost, we still show the expense, but it's often covered by the revenue.
I can vouch for that.
Went up on our fees a couple of years ago, I think.
I can't imagine anybody sitting at this table encouraging that, but. It was, it was, it was interesting.
Got to cover the costs.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
The last one was just kind of the next big dollar item is for the southwestern regional planning commission, the annual dues.
Which page do you want? It's three. Yeah, see, I was looking at yours and look where your staple is.
I pulled mine right up.
Look where my staple is. I should have, I should have followed Jim's lead.
Yeah, don't deal with those staples, Chad. Don't staple it. It's like a no talk. Don't talk. My cup is under the.
Do you feel like we're taking advantage of the opportunities Southwest gives us with Adam and Stefan?
Yeah, yeah, I've gone to several of their quarterly workshops as well. They had me speak very briefly, fortunately, about, you know, the the good work Swansea has done, having a lot of these housing projects, which they clapped, I said, but we, we really take no credit. It's just the, the applications came in and they met the ordinance and. But so, yeah, I participated one on like flooding resiliency last year, talking about how the floods had affected us. So, yeah, no, I think, I think we're getting good value. JV Mac and Todd and Henry Underwood.
Yep.
We, we use our fair share, I think. Other people are probably forgetting.
You've been a good resource.
Yeah, Dan. Continuing on forty one ninety four is town hall and with the mall primarily building and general government buildings. So one that's still in there is kind of a placeholder, but going in a different direction is janitorial salaries. We previously had an employee who was cleaning at night. For most of the summer, we just kind of got by, just town hall folks cleaning up. But I think there's been interest in going back to having a professional come in every week or two to clean the bathrooms and just do some dusting. So that's, that's been working pretty well. So it's still shown in here as town hall janitorial salaries, but probably created, I think Theresa was going to create a new line for custodial services or something, so that'll be reflected when it comes back. Fuel usage has been, oh, because maybe we got a couple of deliveries, but all been down pretty good with the mini splits. They've been very beneficial. The electricity really, usage really hasn't gone up too bad. So that's been, that's been a good, certainly good from a comfort standpoint, but also I think from a utility usage standpoint, it's been doing well.
Well, you're dropping them both. Moving forward, you feel, you feel comfortable with that?
I do. Yeah, the twenty three electricity usage was a little bit of an anomaly, and so also was twenty four because there was like a six month period where they didn't, I think we talked about this for one of the other budgets, there was like a, like a catch up invoice. So I think we were under on twenty three and we're going to be a little over from that reason on twenty four, I think. I think of that.
We have any, anything other than what we're currently doing that, the town hall from a maintenance perspective that's significant? It doesn't come under CIP?
Yeah, this is really like the water heater broke and we're gonna fix it. Like, this is really meant for the small stuff. Unfortunately, we do usually use it, which is why I bumped it up a little bit. But no, I don't, I don't really, we're talking about replacing some of the really grungy carpets with some kind of vinyl flooring, like what we have in the back entry, if you come in that door, that flooring, I think. Yeah, we'll put in some more, more of the offices, but if DPW does the labor, flooring costs should be relatively cheap. So, yeah, I think mainly flooring is the big thing that we've been talking about. The painting a few years ago was still pretty good. So once we get the entryway done, it's gonna need, the whole building exterior is gonna need to be painted again. We don't have it in CIP, but that'd be something where we could tap some of those per unit rent funds to spruce it up if we want to next year, so I think we're in pretty good shape.
I forget, stay ahead of it.
That will be good. Getting votes now is the hard thing, finding answers as we found out for this. Hopefully between the gutters and the front work will help, not, not pay out of this budget, but help the water issues in the basement.
It's gonna be good, Mo.
Help the overall.
I think we're gonna be good.
Yeah.
So all these insurances here, this is for everything, right? When it says health insurance, is this for everybody?
Correct, so we'll just go down the line. So property and liability insurance is through Primex is the risk pool we use.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's for all departments. Health insurance contingency, we don't budget anything in there anymore.
Yeah.
Health insurance, so yes, that's for all town employees, so giving you the current kind of breakdown by plan, not by department. I can give it by department if that's helpful, but. Well, the reason we put it in, in a group like this, sometimes do it differently, but we have a lot of like one or two person departments. And so, A, there's some degree of a personal privacy concern. I don't know how valid that is. It's really just about if they're married or have kids, but the bigger thing is say you have, say we had, you know, fire department.
People could figure it out.
Well, that too, but say we have someone in there that's a single plan, then that person leaves and we hire someone that's on a family plan, that's gonna, it's gonna hurt that budget.
Yeah.
Versus it kind of washes out better.
Makes sense.
In here. And vacant positions, we budget at a two person plan, so by doing that, we were able to take out the contingency line item. The other part that I think has worked very well, and I've gotten very few complaints, is the health reimbursement accounts. So when we changed to all employees going over to, I don't remember if it was having any deductible or a higher deductible plan, the town pays the second half of the deductible. So say it's a thousand dollars. The employee pays the first five hundred and then the town pays the second five hundred. So it allowed everyone, both the town and the employee, to save on the premium aspect, but also gave the employees kind of the peace of mind that I'm not gonna necessarily have to pay the whole deductible. I think it's a win win because a lot of them don't end up using it, but if we have a higher premium, we're all paying for it whether we use it or not. So I think that, that was a good way to control the health insurance costs and might be something to continue to look at. The premiums, we pay, the town pays eighty five percent and the employees pay fifteen percent. And if they opt out.
Yeah, all across the board.
Across the board.
Ultimately, yeah.
And if the employee opts out.
Generous. That's unbelievable. And that's what I don't think people understand, like I think Sly said it, that, you know, we, we offer a lot of good stuff that they're not realizing they'll pay, right? Then other towns, you know, we got beat up by being low, but let's compare incentives in health insurances to other towns, and I bet you we're up to the top, right? So tell me a little about the short term.
Did we want to add long term disability? I need to, I need to add that in, yes. Yeah, so it's sure, a short term in here.
That was a good one. Just so.
For cheap.
It's a no brainer. That was good.
She's funny. Good job. Good job, Megan. To your leadership, your guidance.
Your support.
Right, somebody was tearing that chair. We didn't hit the rock, that's great.
Not yet.
Now we're not.
Uh, so the next one is forty one ninety nine, so just general government expenses. So it's really a lot of miscellaneous stuff. Tax maps revisions has gone up because we have the GIS software now, so there are some additional costs to update that. If we want to update the building, footprints as well, that'll have a cost to it. It's like I said, a lot of, a lot of utilities, phone and internet for town hall.
So with office supplies, where you exceeded the budget through September, you feel confident we can get it down, the way of, was it a? Was it just to how they're billed or the invoicing, and there's no more invoicing for the fourth quarter?
I doubt that there's no more invoicing. Might, might be safe to add a thousand. I don't, I don't have a good answer, but might be safe to bump it up, spend out six thousand for a while. I don't know if there was a big bill that hit in September that threw it off that I didn't notice before, but most of those I just kind of automatically.
Was, didn't we buy a new printer until, was that the end of the?
So that would be in the new equipment, you'll see a twenty four activity.
Okay, yeah.
New equipment, yeah. So by buying that, we didn't have to increase the budget to add in like a lease payment, so we're just paying for the prints.
Might be nice if we could find a couple of points in there to, to drop it down from, I guess we'll be at nine or ten percent to uh, maybe it's five or six. And we will be at ten percent.
We did something with postage, didn't we too? We bought a new postage machine or something?
Yeah, that's down here in the bottom.
We did something with.
Yeah, we did.
Six oh three per.
Yeah, I think that was the sherry. Now, I might want to verify that that's.
So the copper was eleven grand?
I think it was the postage meter too. There was a copper and a postage meter, but.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like a lot of money.
You made the motion.
I know, it's just, it seems like a lot of money when I'm looking at it black and white. You just told me that, because I thought you said eleven hundred and we made.
Cash out of pocket for the postage meter, or is it just a six oh three per quarter?
Yeah, I don't remember that.
You probably paid the postage too, right, on top of that?
Correct. And the postage is budgeted a little weird in that a lot of times you'll see that, like, we'll look like we're over budget and then it gets, then we allocate it out as it gets used. So, yeah, so when we buy postage, it goes up and then it goes, goes up to the planning.
There's a chance here until you need it, right?
Yeah. And it's another thing with timing, if we buy a thousand dollars of postage on December thirtieth.
Let's go back to that page.
We need a governor to say, cut four percent from every budget. Well, we could make that motion.
It's easier for.
Did that one year.
It's easier for him to say on his way out. He's not gonna have to deal with it.
One year, remember? And it got, it got close. And we, would we cut everybody back to five percent or something? Yeah, it was close.
He had us closing.
Then that one department came in with a ten percent proposed increase. Yeah. All right, who's next?
Non-public says needed?
Well, I think you said one for reputation.
Can you have one for? Uh, same.
Reputation.
So make a motion, we move into non-public and uh, see reputation.
Whoa. A blind squirrel. Honestly, God, there's only one on there. Karizinski.
Hi.
How about?
It's me.
Invest them.